Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order the April 15th, 2014 City Council Meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, please guide this council that's going to be sworn in tonight to serve the citizens of Avalon as they intend. Please join me in a moment of silence in memory of Buddy Wilson Sr., who has recently passed. He contributed a great deal to this community, and we will be adjourning the meeting in his memory. And now... Rule call Denise.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Ponse.
Here.
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
And Councilmember Morel is absent this evening.
Ben, do you have any announcements?
Yes, Mayor, we have one. Karen from the Bay News has asked if she could at some point get a photo of you all sitting up at the dais. So however that works in the sequence of things, we need to make sure that we allow for that if that's at all possible, you sitting here as we are.
Okay. Well, with the way the evening will unveil itself, why don't we have her do it now so we don't forget?
Okay. Does that work for you? No pressure.
Yeah, no pressure.
Can I let you guys come up here?
Oh, that's not sitting in the dais then.
Yeah, nice tie.
I forgot my scissors. There's a spot.
No, no other announcements.
Written communication?
No written communication tonight that I'm aware of. Okay, thank you.
All right, let's go on to presentations.
Yes, Mayor, we've got two presentations this evening, both from Southern California, Edison. So Hilda Delgado will lead the effort. There will be other casts of characters brought up to pitch in during this, but we'll start with Hilda. So Hilda, please lead us through.
Good evening. Thank you for your time today. My name is again Hilda Delgado. I'm the representative for Southern California Edison, and we have several pending issues here in the island. We have completed construction of the installation, an installation of the vault next to the Metropole Hotel. Due to archaeological delays, we have requested an extension of our obstruction permit for the construction of Vault Two. The permit has already been filed with the city, so by Monday, April 21st, we expect to have a fence down by the Metropole Hotel. Also, by this date, our crews will have the street graded, ready for payment, which will also occur the week of April 29th. Lastly, our crews will begin construction of the second vault right up the street from the Metropole Hotel. Regarding the water rate case, I know we had a few questions from some members of the council. So on that end, we have a new administrative law judge that is suspected to issue a decision in the next couple of weeks. So hopefully by June, we'll come and give you an update, hopefully. Again, this may take a couple more months. Once the water rate case is resolved, Southern California Edison will be able to proceed with the water and gas sale. One, another pending item that we have that was brought to our attention is a utility bill scam. They have been targeting customers around the island and throughout the United States, and some of these customers are Southern California Edison customers. We have received the suspicious-looking emails and phone calls. We want to alert our customers that please be prepared and aware that Southern California Edison does not either email or contact via telephone customers to request payment. So I will be providing information to the local newspaper so our customers are aware of how to protect themselves if they're faced with the situation. Also, they can call our Pebbley Beach office, and the number there is 800-600-4723. And following these updates, we have, this coming month, the month of June, we want to alert that Catalina Island may have, may need to go into mandatory water conservation and rationing. I'm here with my colleague Jeff Lawrence to provide you an update of that mandatory water rationing phase. Two, California, as you may know, is facing one of the most severe droughts on record, and Catalina Island has not been spared from the impacts of the drought. Since June 2013, Catalina has been in stage one mandatory water conservation, when the Middle Ranch reservoir level dropped below 600 acre-feet level. And as of April 10th, 2014, the reservoir is currently at 385 acre-feet. Assuming that no significant rainfall, it's on the way, the latest reservoir forecast indicates that we may again need to go on stage two mandatory water conservation and rationing that will start in June 2014. So with that, I will pass it over to my colleague Jeff Lawrence to take you, to review this presentation with you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, distinguished members of the council. Excuse me. My name is Jeff Lawrence. I'm a senior project manager for Southern California Edison, and I'll be overseeing the stage-two water rationing project on behalf of Southern California Edison. So we're here really just to provide a high-level overview of the stage-two rationing, show you what our preliminary timeline is, which is still subject to change, but we at least want to get the communication out to the council and to the public. We're still working through a lot of the final details, so we don't have the answers to all of your questions here tonight, but we at least wanted to get the ball rolling on getting the word out to you and to the public. What you're looking at here is a graphical representation of our Middle Ranch reservoir. At full capacity, we're at about 1,000 acre-feet. In June of 2012, we entered stage one water conservation, and that's when the reservoir reached 600 acre-feet. We are now anticipating having to enter stage two mandatory water conservation sometime in the June timeframe, still subject to change, but that's what our most recent forecast is based on the current water level. What we're anticipating as far as increased consumption during the tourist season and being that we're not forecasting any significant rainfall, that's kind of where we're at right now, is sometime in June, we'll need to implement the mandatory rationing, or randatory rationing, excuse me. Really, the entire purpose of this stage-two rationing is to preserve our natural resources and other costly measures that we might have to employ if, for some reason, we don't have enough water reserves for the island. We might have to barge water to the island, other costly measures. We're trying to avoid that at all costs. The next two stages are very drastic rationing measures that we really want to try to avoid and partner with the city and the public to avoid those circumstances. Stage three is when we reach 200 acre-feet in the Middle Ranch reservoir, and that would be a 50% reduction in customers' water consumption based on a baseline period. Stage four is then a 75% reduction of the customers' consumption from a baseline period. Right now, where we're at is stage two is a 25% reduction in our customers' baseline period, and I'll share a little information of what the baseline period is and why we estimate the water allotments in that fashion. So what we're doing is we're taking a 12-month period from prior to implementing stage-one water rationing, and so that 12-month period will be June 12th, 2012, through May 13th, 2013. So what we'll do is we'll look at each individual month during that period of time and then apply a multiplier of 75% to that, and that'll be all of our customers' water allotment while we're in the stage-two water rationing. Once we have a definitive date on when we need to enter stage-two rationing, we'll be sending out a communication to all of our customers, letting them know what their water allotment is. And we know that there are some occurrences where the customers on our baseline period may have changed. There might be different residents in a home, for instance. You might have had a business that was not in business during that time period, and now they are. So we'll have a variance process for people to apply to let us know that their variance is extremely low, and then we can review each instance case by case and provide an adjusted water allotment depending on the circumstances. Why we go into the period prior to stage-one water rationing is for a number of reasons. Primarily for customers that have implemented any type of water conservation efforts when we enter stage one, we don't want to unfairly penalize them and use a reduced water consumption for assessing what their water allotment should be. So we go for the 12-month period immediately before entering stage one. A lot of people have conserved water during stage one, so we'll go back prior to that period of time to estimate what their water allotment should be. What I want to caution the public about is there's really no benefit for customers now to try and increase their water consumption to increase what their water allotment will be, because the period that we're looking at has already gone by, obviously. So there's really no benefit to that. All that's going to do is accelerate the likelihood that we go into stage-three rationing. So really want to discourage that with all of our customers. What you're looking at here is the enforcement policy for making sure customers adhere to the water allotment. On a first offense, we're going to provide our customers with a written warning on their billing statement. Should they have a second violation where they exceed their water allotment, there'll be a flow-restricting device installed on their water main, and what that'll do is it'll reduce water flow by up to 50%. On the second offense, we keep that flow-restricting device on the service for a minimum of three days, and we'll remove it with the collection of a $200 disconnection fee. Then should there be a third offense, we go through the same measure. We install the flow-restricting device, but then we won't remove that device until we are out of stage-two water rationing. And then again, there'll be a collection of another $200 water restrictor removal fee. And then obviously, any tampering with the flow-restricting device has some severe consequences. We want to avoid that at all costs, so there could be potential for discontinuing service if anyone were to tamper with that device. Question, yes?
Are you going to increase the frequency of the meter reading, or just we're going to keep the monthly meter reading?
We're going to keep the monthly meter reading.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the first offense would be the first month, second offense would be the second month, third offense would be the third month if you...
Yeah, exactly.
...so overutilized.
Yeah. And obviously, there may be a period of time there where between our implementation might be mid-cycle for a lot of our customers. Our customers are on varying cycles, so we'll be, we'll look at that as far as when the first timeframe for each customer is for a potential violation. In addition to the water allotment in our stage one, there were a lot of water-use restrictions that were a part of that in our tariff. There's a lot of restrictions which I'll leave a handout for anyone in the public to pick up. Those restrictions are a part of stage two, in addition to what you see on the two bolded points there. Watering of outdoor landscaping vegetation by hoses or sprinkler systems shall be limited to Tuesdays and Fridays at designated times. And then water by use of a container or bucket not exceeding a three-gallon capacity will be permitted anytime on Tuesdays and Fridays only. And then there's a number of other restrictions about, you know, washing personal vehicles, potable water for construction purposes. There's about 12 or 13 water-use restrictions that'll continue to be enforced in stage two. As far as enforcement of the water-use restrictions, again, on a first offense, we're looking at an initial warning, and then we start off with a $25 fine, and then they go up subsequently each, on each occurrence of the same violation, by $25. And that'll continue for as long as we're in stage two. So on February 27th, the CPUC issued a resolution in response to the drought conditions in California, and they're asking for all utilities to revise their drought tariffs. And so we're going to comply with that. We'll be revising our existing water rationing tariffs at the time that we implement stage-two water rationing. We'll send out a notification to the public that we are making changes to the tariff in compliance with the resolution from the CPUC, and we'll also be announcing the location and date of a public hearing to discuss the changes to the tariff, and then also more details available for the stage-two water rationing. What you're looking at here is our estimate of how the timeline would go should we have to implement stage-two rationing in the June timeframe, like we're currently forecasting. We are going to be updating our forecast periodically, every couple of weeks, as we monitor the water level of the reservoir and adjusting this timeline accordingly. But as I said, assuming that we implement in June, we'll be sending out customer communication letters, letting every customer know what their water allotments are, what the variance request process is and the forms to file a variance request, and then also some frequently asked questions. We'll be sending that out in May in anticipation of our implementation, and we'll also post that information on our website as well for the public. We're reaching out and running advertisements for our public hearing. We'll also be notifying customers either through mailing or through the customers' bills of the public hearing and make sure that everyone is well informed of that. We'll also be filing a tier-two advice filing letter with the PUC, requesting revisions to our existing tariff, and then holding the public hearing sometime at the end of And then we'll also anticipate starting to receive those customer variance request forms during that time after the word is out, the customer allotment letter's been sent out. We know there's going to be a need for some customers to file that variance request form. We'll start processing those immediately. And June is when we anticipate implementing stage two, unless we have some favorable circumstances, if the water reservoir level holds. We'll be coming back to the City Council meeting and announcing our plans and our implementation date. And then on an ongoing basis, monitoring our customers' usage from month to month, and then start issuing warnings should there be a usage in excess of their water allotment or if we start seeing water use infractions. We'll have a code enforcement agent that will be assigned to making sure that nobody's in violation of the water use restrictions. And then we'll continue to update the public on the stage-two and also on the water reservoir. All forecasts are saying we should have a rainy winter next winter, so optimistically, we're all hoping that we don't have to have any more severe implementation other than just stage-two and then come out of stage-two with a rainy winter is what we're all hoping What you're looking at there is a link to our website. As the implementation date approaches, we'll have updated information available for the public to view on the website. The information that is in the customer allotment letters and FAQs will all be posted on our website, and then there's three additional websites there with water conservation tips that are useful. With that, are there any questions?
I have one that might lead into a couple. You mentioned barging water. Have you already drafted a plan to barge water to the island, or is this just something that is an option?
No, there have not been any plans drafted for that. At this point in time, we're just trying to avoid the need to start planning for something like that.
So is Edison doing anything else other than possibly drafting a plan to increase the water resources of this community outside of the barge?
There, right now, our focus has been on preparing for the stage-two rationing, and then we will continue to look at all other options with sensitivity to, you know, costs to the community and our ratepayers and trying to preserve our natural resources. We'll be looking at all options.
All right. I would suggest you start there, and should have started there months ago. The reality is, is you like to measure success based on saying things like prudent to ratepayers, prudent to stockholders. Where does this community sit if the faucets are turned off?
Closed.
How do you measure that?
Yeah, and that's obviously not an option to start turning off the faucets. I know the...
Well, it's the only option when you don't look for additional resources. I mean, when you're talking about barging water to the island, you're talking, you know, there's some discussion about an additional wells, some discussion about renewed technologies in the D-cell world. Those are the conversations you should be having and should have been having for some When you go in to redo your tariff that addresses the rationing plans, do you intend to redo the tariff as it relates to the aquifers that are available and adding D-cell technology to the tariff as it exists?
As far as adding D-cell, you know, we're looking at all options. We're working with our regulatory folks and our staff at our Pebbley Beach facility to look at all options. There are other options, like you said, about additional wells and aquifers on the island. There has been work done in that area, and we'll continue to work in that area. I can't commit to what we'll actually update in the tariff, but I can tell you that we are looking at all those options.
And I recognize tonight we're passing the baton, but the members that are in the audience, keep carrying that baton and keep charging on, because water is our future, so...
It's a concern of all of ours.
Thank you. Any other questions?
We've averaged 30 acre-feet a month the last 10 months. At that rate, we'll be into phase three in three months, which means early September. Because, I mean, we went from 600 to 300, now we're going from 200 to 300, 200. So we should probably plan on getting into phase three before the rainy season.
Yeah, we've, the reservoir has actually held steady for the last couple of months, and we'd expect to see some benefits from the stage-two rationing to hopefully delay the implementation of stage-three. So as far as what the reservoir level decrease will be once we're into stage-two, we would anticipate having a more favorable timeline than that.
Thanks. Any other questions? Anyone in the audience have a question? Wayne?
Wayne Griffin, President and CEO, Catalina Island Chamber of Commerce. Couple of comments and a question. You know, members of this community have been voluntarily conserving water on a fairly serious level for years, and so I'm quite fearful that a lot of people are going to have a lot of difficulty making a 25% reduction, let alone a 50% reduction. And I'm not sure how many folks in the community remember back to the late 1970s when we did go into phase-three and in terms of, in terms of tourism, what that meant was that restaurants didn't have enough water to wash dishes. So the fanciest restaurants in town were serving on paper plates, plastic forks and spoons, plastic glasses, because there was no water available to wash dishes. Many lodging facilities were asking their guests to bring bed linens and bath towels to the island with them for their vacation in a hotel, because the hotel didn't have enough water allocation to wash linens and towels. So this phase-three is a really serious issue in terms of tourism, which affects the city's revenues, which, you know, affects lots of things. And here again, if conservation's efforts are successful, the next time we hear from Edison is because they haven't met their revenue requirement, and now we're going to need to increase rates again because we've been successful at conserving. I mean, it's a vicious cycle that has a no-win endgame, and somehow we've got to change this. We cannot plan for this drought after drought after drought. And the question I have is, we base various levels of rationing on the amount, number of acre-feet in the reservoir, and yet it's my understanding that we draw no water from the reservoir, that all the water that is drawn and goes into our system that we use is pumped from wells coming from the aquifer under the reservoir. So maybe I'm wrong, but I've been out there and had tours of these wells, and we're not drawing any water from the reservoir. So why are our rationing levels based on an artificial level in the reservoir that really has nothing to do with where our water's coming from?
Well, thank you for your question. I'd be lying to you if I told you the technical aspects of the water reservoir. That is not my area of expertise, so I don't even want to begin to go down a path that I might be misspeaking. I'd be happy to look into it and report back to the council on an accurate response, but at this point, I'd be purely speculating on a response for you. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Joe Sampson, 119 Marilla. I have some concerns. I've had some community members approach me just today, and they let me know that we're already conserving water. We've always been conserving water. We're very adamant about that. So if you base the percentages that you're going to be cutting the allotment down to on our past usage, in a sense, it's not, it's not a fair way to do it, because most of us are already adamant, and we already conserve water. It's just a way of life for us. I have a great concern about what we're going to do about our guests that come over, our visitors, about the big swimming pools, and also about the, you know, Wayne had some great points. We've got some huge projects coming up. The island company's talking about, you know, they're trying to shove their projects through, and we don't have the water to even serve our community as it is right now. I think it would have been a good idea if maybe Edison would have brought up some experts on this subject today to help us understand and help the community understand. I mean, this is, we're talking about a month or two away, and we don't even know where we're going with this. I mean, isn't that fair? That would be a fair thing to do. Okay, all this information that you have, that you've put up on the screen right here, this should be made public tomorrow. You guys should have copies of this, should have it at the post office, you should have some area down in the public sector where you're handing these things out, and you have some people helping us as a community, as your customers, understand where we're going into the future with our water. We're talking about Bedrock Well, it's going to provide 350 acre-feet of water, but we don't know how that's going to affect the rest of our water supply. We could potentially contaminate the rest of our water supply if we go down and tap into that Bedrock Aquifer. There's a good, there's a good chance that that could happen, and it could also affect the top water storage. The Conservancy, the island company, City of Avalon, Edison International, Edison, need to get together. We have to start dredging our top water, reservoirs, ponds, lakes, and storage areas. We have to seriously think... We have to seriously think about this immediately. Anyway, that's all I wanted to say.
Any other questions or comments?
Lisa Lavelle, 239 Descanso. I just wanted to confirm you actually would not shut off water for those hitting the third offense, that there actually would be a different alternative since there's not another water
So with the water allotment, there, we do not, we will not be discontinuing service for someone that exceeds their water allotment multiple times. The flow restrictor device will remain intact. We will discontinue service should there be tampering with that flow restrictor, as I talked about. There is a potential for some of the water restriction violations for disconnection there, but not for any of the water allotments. So it's simply just the fines for any type of violations need to be paid on their customer's bill, and that'll be avoided.
Is there any mechanism for low-cost water buyers to have assistance in their $200 reconnect fee to remove the restrictor? Or is that just a flat 200?
That we can look into. My understanding is that the stipulations in the care program for people that are on a care rate doesn't apply to the restrictor fees or any of the water use restriction fees, but we'll be happy to double-check that. That's my understanding.
And one bit of history Mr. Griffin brought up. I was running Hotel Atwater in 1978, the last time we had some serious stuff, and our final allocation was 11 gallons of water per guest per day. And we didn't get to shower with the guests either.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
I appreciate the council's time.
Okay, oral communications.
We've got one more presentation.
Oh, one more presentation?
No, I think they combined it, didn't they?
They combined it, yeah.
They did?
Well, based on what I'm reading here in front of me, yeah. Okay, oral communications. Anyone in the audience care to address the council for any item that is not currently on our agenda? You may now come forward.
Here's Jen.
There's Jen.
Good evening. I have a whole slew of community announcements, so bear with me. Firstly, this Thursday is Spring Fest down on Creston Avenue from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m., food and games and great live music, and a chance to visit with your friends before everyone gets slammed with the busy summer season. So come on down, Creston Avenue, this Thursday from 5:00 to 9:00. It's a great chance to support a lot of great nonprofits here in our community, so they'd love to see you down there. Then we have the Community Easter Egg Hunt this Saturday. That's at 9:00 on the Pits and Putt, which is the area, if you're not familiar, in between the school auditorium and the sand trap. And you'll enter right next to the school auditorium. Arrive before 9:00 a.m. The entire event's over at 9:02, so if you're late, you've missed it. And bring your camera. The Easter Bunny, I'm sure, will make an appearance. We also are excited to announce that we have our monthly free ballroom lessons happening this coming Monday, the 21st, at Tremont Hall. But we are also opening it up for a youth class and a middle school class before the adult class. So elementary students are encouraged to attend. This is the first day of spring break, but we're hoping that they'll come up for ballroom dance lessons. So that's elementary grades three through five at 4:00 at Tremont, middle school grades six through eight at 5:15. And then all adults and high schoolers are encouraged to attend at 6:30 till 8:00. Again, that's free ballroom dance lessons at Tremont Hall. Then we also have a community yard sale. Many people have been having their own yard sales and garage sales the last few weeks as they've been spring cleaning, and the city would like to facilitate one for those that don't have a space to hold it themselves at their house. And so this will be on Saturday, the 26th. That is taking place at Peoples Park, right across from the City Hall and Fire Station. You will need to reserve a spot ahead of time. It's free to participate, but you will need to sign up at the Rec Department at City Hall. And signups are ready to go. Then the DMV will be here on the island, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, April 21st, 22nd, 23rd. Signups are currently taking place, and they are really filling up fast. So if you've not made your appointment yet for DMV, come on into City Hall and sign up. And lastly, the City of Avalon has announced that this year's Fourth of July Parade theme is Salute to Honored Veterans, Heroes in Our Heart. In appreciation for their service to our country, the Community of Avalon is honoring all World War II veterans as our grand marshals this year. And any World War II veterans that would be willing to be a grand marshal are encouraged to contact the Recreation Department so that we can get your information and provide a vehicle for the day, and we're very excited. So contact City Hall for more information. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jen. Anyone else?
Hi, David Clary, Environment Strategy. I just wanted to bring it to you guys' attention that the new truck has shown up. I want to thank you for the purchase. You might have seen the guys using it around town. If anybody's interested in seeing it or anything, I can arrange it. Just give me a call. So I want to thank you very much.
I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Even though vehicle season has pretty much ended for our regular registration on auto wets, we still are registering auto wets, but if you haven't gone through the sound testing, we're doing that now on Monday mornings from 9:00 to 12:00. The only Monday that we don't have coming up in the near future will be May the 5th, because we don't have a crew to set that up on that day. But the other Mondays, for the time being, we'll tell you when we're going to cancel out those Mondays. But for right now, at least through the month of May, we'll be doing them, except for May the 5th. So 9:00 to 12:00 on Monday mornings, come on up and get a sound test.
Thanks, Dudley.
Better half.
And along the lines of transportation in our community, at Spring Fest this Thursday, there's also going to be a mini Tiny Eco Auto Show. Mini because there's not very many vehicles, tiny because they're small, eco because they're environmentally friendly. It's also going to carry through the weekend with the Catalina Art Association's Catalina Art Fair and Exhibition. So we encourage people to come down and see some of the vehicles as we're kind of looking for transportation opportunities towards the future and how we can improve our transportation designs throughout the community. On display, we currently will have a Mercedes F-cell B-Class. It's a hydrogen fuel cell, full-size vehicle. It's a demonstration of the technology. And if anybody's interested in learning more about it, you can contact me here at City Hall, jmonroe@cityofavalon.com, or 310-510-0220, extension 231. And we'll have a couple of other vehicles on display as well throughout the event.
Thank you, Jordan. Anyone else? Okay, consent calendar.
Yes, Mayor, we've got five items on the consent calendar. One with the City of Avalon acting as a successor agency. The first item is actions from the April 1 City Council meeting. Second are the expenditures with warrants in the amount of approximately $600,000 and payroll in the amount of approximately $200,000. We also have a resolution reciting the facts of the past election, as well as a resolution approving participation in the Los Angeles Urban County Community Development Block Program, which will allow for, excuse me, private sewer lateral grants for low-income households, qualifying households. And then lastly, number five is a status update on the emergency repairs to Crescent Avenue, as we have been doing since the start of that project. Five items.
Okay. Five items on the consent calendar. Would any member of the council or audience care to pull an item for further discussion? Anyone care to entertain a motion then on the five items on consent?
I make a motion to approve the five items.
Do we have a second? Do we have a motion and a second? Call for a vote, please.
Four ayes, one absent, Councilmember Morrow.
Okay, general business.
Yes, general business is the presentation of proclamations to our outgoing council members. And I apologize in advance for your having to endure my cold voice, but I'm afraid that's what you have this evening, because I would very much like to read each of these proclamations into the record if I could. So if that's acceptable to the council, I'd like to start. Okay. This is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Avalon honoring Bob Kennedy for his years of service as mayor and council member of the City of Avalon. Whereas, Bob Kennedy has served the City of Avalon as mayor and council member for the past 10 years. And whereas, in addition to his dedication to civic leadership, Bob is also a fervent advocate for public safety, having served first as a reserve firefighter and later as a reserve fire captain for the Avalon Fire Department for the past nine years. And whereas, beyond his service as a reserve fire captain and a reserve firefighter, Bob is also a licensed EMT, Emergency Medical Technician, and is qualified as a reserve engineer. And whereas, an established Avalon businessman and noted Catalina Island boat captain and dive master, Bob has owned Scoobalove along with his wife and steadfast partner Tina for over 30 years. And whereas, family is extremely important to Bob and Tina, having raised four girls here in the City of Avalon. And whereas, while Bob loves his daughters, he has also found space in his heart for his two grandchildren, spending as much time with them as his busy life affords. And whereas, Bob may be the only mayor of Avalon to effectively legislate from the dais while enjoying a pinch of skull between his cheek. And whereas, Bob is also likely the only mayor to come directly to a council meeting from a monthly reserve fire drill, sometimes not even having time to change out of his turnouts before the start of the meeting. And whereas, Bob is a tireless advocate for the community, who is always available to address any of the city's many challenges whenever the need arises. So now therefore, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Avalon, extend our sincere appreciation and gratitude to Bob for his contributions to the community and dedication to the continual improvement of the City of Avalon. Thank you, Bob.
I've got a couple more to read.
Okay.
Okay. Once Denise lets me read them. Okay, very good. All right. Can I borrow a little bit of your water? I'm sorry. Forgive me.
Pour him some Scotch.
He probably has that on him.
Is that really water?
All right. A proclamation of the City Council of the City of Avalon honoring Michael Ponce for his years of service as council member of the City of Avalon. Whereas, Michael Ponce has served the City of Avalon as council member for the past eight years. And whereas, during half of his tenure on the City Council, Michael served in the capacity as mayor pro tem. And whereas, while on the City Council, Michael also served as chairman of the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees. And whereas, Michael has been extremely involved in statewide and regional associations on behalf of the city, including the League of California Cities and the Gateway Cities Council of Government. And whereas, within the League and Gateway COG organizations, Michael assumed leadership roles, serving as the chairman of the League's Community Services Committee, a member of the League's Revenue and Taxation Committee, as well as a city's official delegate to the Gateway COG. And whereas, beyond his civic involvement and participation on behalf of the city at statewide and regional level, Michael has also been active within the Avalon nonprofit community. And whereas, this nonprofit involvement has included leadership roles, including terms as chairman of both Choices and the Catalina Art Association. And whereas, Michael has also devoted time to Avalon public safety, having served as a community emergency response team, or CERT, member. And whereas, Michael enjoys being near his family, so much so that he plans his routes around town such that he is able to wave to a family member at every corner along the way. And whereas, Michael has a very strong work ethic, coupled with a passion for the City of Avalon. And whereas, this combination of hard work and love for Avalon usually results in Michael having no days off each week from either work or the various other organizations or associations to which he belongs. And whereas, Michael is a thoughtful community leader and consummate professional who makes the time and effort to form well-researched, intelligent opinions on topics in order to best lead the community. Now, therefore, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Avalon, we offer our heartfelt appreciation to Michael for his dedication and service to improve the City Okay, I have one more I'd like to read. Councilmember Morrow could not be with us tonight, but I would be remiss in my duties if I did not read this proclamation into the record. So I hope you'll allow me to proceed with that. A proclamation of the City Council of the City of Avalon honoring Ralph Morrow for his years of service as mayor and council member of the City of Avalon. Whereas, Ralph Morrow has been elected as mayor and council member in Avalon numerous times since 1992, for a total of 16 years on the City Council. And whereas, Ralph has been a longtime supporter of the Catalina Island Medical Center and an enthusiastic proponent of their future plans, having been on the hospital board of trustees for a number of years. And whereas, Ralph is a veteran of the United States Navy, having served our country during the Korean conflict as a crewman in a P-2 Neptune. And whereas, Ralph is passionate about helping his fellow veterans actively participating in the Avalon branch of the veterans of foreign wars. And whereas, Ralph is highly involved with numerous philanthropic causes within the community, including the children's dental clinic. And whereas, Ralph is a public safety proponent and has been a longtime supporter of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, as well as the Los Angeles County Fire Baywatch Program. And whereas, the community can thank Ralph for helping to bring internet and enhanced cable service to Avalon, as he owned and operated the cable utility in town and provided these services up until recently. And whereas, Ralph is an advocate for alternate energy and advanced technology, and has worked tirelessly in an effort to improve Avalon's energy future. And whereas, during his tenure, Ralph has sought to foster key intergovernmental relationships that are important to the City of Avalon, as well as Catalina Island, including those with Los Angeles County Supervisor Don Knabey's office, among others. Now therefore, on behalf of the council and the citizens of Avalon, we express our sincere gratitude to Ralph for his years of service on the council and dedication to the community.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael, Richard, Holy. Where's Ralph? Palm Springs? I'll send him a text. It's been a pleasure serving the community. I wouldn't have changed a stitch of it. Good luck with handling our water needs and issues. I'll be in the background, and I intend to visit the podium from time to time, keep everybody in check. So it's been a pleasure to serve, and I won't be back anytime soon.
My turn? I would just like to say it has been an honor and a privilege serving the citizens of Avalon. All I ask is that someone step up to the plate and represent the city on the mainland. That's all I ask. Thank you very much.
Yes.
All right?
Ben.
Sir.
Sorry, we got my phone.
No.
I'm gonna start with the mayor. Annie, I go back since our kids were hit. Raise your hand. I solemnly affirm, I solemnly affirm that I will support the mayor, that I will support the mayor, the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of California, and that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about
You solemnly affirm.
I will support the mayor.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Or in domestic.
Or in domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And I take this obligation freely.
And I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
I send Cindy Cassidy McGoogan solemnly affirm, I solemnly affirm that I will support the mayor, the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of California, and the Constitution of the State of California, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance, to the Constitution of the United States, to the Constitution of the United States, to the Constitution of the State of California, and the Constitution of the State of California, and that I take this obligation freely, and I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will faithfully discharge, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Mayor Marshall, we would like to call for nominations of the mayor pro tem.
Yes, do we have nominations for the mayor pro tem position? Anybody?
I would like to go ahead and open that. I would like to nominate Mr. Olson. He says he is the most veteran of all of us. Been here the longest. I'd like to nominate Ollie Olson as mayor pro tem.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Can we call for the vote? You didn't teach us how to vote.
Wait, wait, wait. Any comments from the public?
Oh, any comments from the public? We just vote on this one? Yeah, might as well. Okay. So, are there any further nominations? If not, let's call for the vote.
All ayes.
Congratulations, he's mayor pro tem.
Don't be upset. Don't be upset.
The Audit Committee, there are two members of city council that sit on the Audit Committee, and their job is to review all warrants to go before the city council before their approval. So, I would like to appoint two members to that, and then I will ask if I have your consensus. I would like to nominate Rich Hernandez and Cindy Cassidy-McGoogan to the Audit Committee. Do I have your consensus?
Move consent? Yes, yeah, I'm gonna move consent.
Is there a second?
I have a second, yeah.
Okay. We're good. consensus. The Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees, I'm not quite sure how we appoint ourselves to serve as the hospital board of trustees.
But you all agree to serve on that board?
Do you all agree to serve on that board?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Excellent, thank you. And is there any one that has interest in sitting on that board as the chairman?
I'll call on Michael's footsteps.
Will you?
Hell yeah.
Pick a better guy.
Anybody else highly interested? Okay, is there a consensus that Ollie Olson sit as the chairman?
Yes.
I agree.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can find a better guy.
You could look a little harder.
That's it? Okay, all righty. So, I did, there's a, and I, I'll give everybody an opportunity to chat. So, but I would like to just make a little, a few comments, and one of the comments is I hope we can improve the lighting in here because it's really bad on my eyes. What's that?
That's the way it is.
Oh, it is. I don't ever need a stronger bulb or better direction, anyway. To the community of Avalon, I'm very proud to be your mayor, and thank you for the support that you've given us. I'm also very excited to sit with two new council members, Cindy and Joe, and as well to join the company of Rich and Ollie. I believe the community is up for exciting times and challenges, and we will share them with you. The three new council members equate to change. Where we currently lack knowledge, we will be reaching out to staff, the community, and our predecessors to gain insight. I will strive to facilitate the meetings following Rosenberg's Rules of Order, which provides direction, used to be Robert's Rules of Orders, but they've tweaked it for cities, small cities, members of five-member councils. The Rules of Order will provide us direction and protects the rights of the majority to decide, the rights of the minority to be heard, the rights of individual members, and the rights of absentees. We soon will be venturing to establish a strategic plan to better decide our efforts and mandate accountability. And I'm gonna keep it brief because from here on out, I think you're gonna find that we have a lot of people there with things to talk about and things to discuss, so be happy this meeting is a short one because it might not happen for quite a while. Anyway, thank you. Cindy, do you want to comment?
Oh my gosh, I was not actually prepared, but I do want to reach out and say thank you so much for all of the overwhelming support, and specifically to all of those who spoke to me, came to talk to me, guided me, educated me, and offered insight into areas that I didn't previously have any knowledge on. So, thank you, I'm looking forward to having that much open door and communication going forward, and I'm very pleased to be up here with Annie and Joe as well, and Ollie and Richard, so thank you so much.
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm honored to serve the community that elected me to this office. Whether you voted for me or not, I'm still gonna stand up here and serve in your best interest, the best I can. I work for you now as a public servant, and I want you to know that I will go to bat for you any ways, any way I possibly can. I'd also like to thank the veterans that fought for my freedom throughout the history of America, and there's a lot of them, and especially the ones who died for my freedom. I'd like to give them kudos right now while I have a chance because I claim to be very patriotic, and that's exactly what I am, and I stand up to that, and I'm an advocate for veterans. And if you are a veteran and there's anything I can do for you, please let me know, and I'd go to bat for you in any way, shape, or form that I possibly can. Anyway, thank you very much to the community, and let's do this, we can do this together, and we can make this community better. An honor to serve with Ollie, Annie, Beetle, and Cindy McGoogan. Richard, Richard Hernandez.
For those of you who don't know.
His dad called him Beetle after Beetle Bailey. Anyway, God bless Felipe Hernandez too. Anyway, that's all I want to say. Thank you guys very much for being here.
Ollie, do you and Rich have anything you would like to say?
I'd just like to thank Bob and Michael and Ralph for the past two years, all the time they put in, and I learned a lot from them, and I look forward to serving with the new council. As a point of interest, two years ago, there's not one council member left. They've turned the whole council in the last two elections, which is kind of like strange for Avalon, I don't think has ever happened before, but it's gonna be fun, it's gonna be exciting times.
Again, I'm just looking forward to working with the new council, and again, Bob and Michael, thanks very much for all your help on the council, and looking forward to a long, hard road here, so we will conquer it.
Okay, well, I already screwed up, folks. The city manager's report was supposed to go before I got into the little speech there. So, city manager, do you have a report?
Yes, mayor. First of all, looking forward to working with the council, the new council members and the existing council members. It's gonna be a great partnership, lots of challenges, but lots of solutions, so firmly believe that. Just want to let the council know that we, this kind of flew under the radar, but it's important for you to know. We received a check from the Hamilton Cove Homeowners Association in the amount of $16,000 approximately, which was the recoupment of costs in total of the city's effort to fix the emergency sewer breakout there a month or two back. So I want to thank the city attorney because the initial response to our request for repayment was less than acceptable, and I want to thank the association because they did the right thing and they covered the city's costs for helping them out in that privately-owned community, so I want to make sure you're aware of that. Secondly, on the topic of the audiovisual improvements for the council chambers, we have a number of concepts and options, I think, that we can explore for this. We've been talking about this for a little while, there may even be some grant money that we can avail ourselves of to help with that effort, so would be happy, it's in our, it's been on our list of things to do as well as part of our IT upgrade, so we're trying to figure out the scope of that and what's the best way to use the funds, and if there are grant monies that we can help to supplant that. That's all I have, thank you.
City attorney?
Two things, one, I also look forward to working with the new council and continuing members. I know that I'll be meeting with three of you tomorrow to go over various legal issues facing the city. Second thing is, one thing that we've utilized in the past, when especially we have a large number of council people coming, is to schedule as early as possible a workshop where the council can sit in a room and just talk about what your priorities are, what you want to do, and we have an unusual situation where we actually have an extra Tuesday this month because it's the fifth Tuesday. So if you wanted to, we could consider doing that before the next council meeting, just kind of a roundtable to sit here in the chambers, it'd be open to the public, and just talk about what your goals are so that we have an idea in serving you and also the community as to what the priorities are, how we go. We've done this in San Dimas and Lake Arrowhead, it's been a fantastic opportunity, so if you're interested, we could, I would suggest you consider that and go forward with that.
Well, and moving forward with that, is that something that you have to let the public know and give them two weeks' notice or something?
Three days' notice.
Three days?
Three days' notice.
Okay, so, I don't know, I'm definitely up for it, I think it's definitely...
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. And a Tuesday is the kind of a good day?
Well, we could do it, you know, about, there's about four months out of the year that you have a fifth Tuesday, and so we have one on the 29th, which is in two weeks from now. That'd be a week before the next council meeting, or we could even do it next Tuesday if you wanted, but basically the concept would be, we have a, we have a study session, if there's particular issues that you would like to talk about, give the list to the city manager and the city clerk, and we'll put it on the agenda, and then we'll just have a list of topics, and every item, we can just go through and discuss in a public forum, you know, and I just think that's a good way to kind of get things off, and again, let the community know what your priorities are and give direction to staff, and then have a discussion among yourselves now that the Brand Act applies. The way to do this is in the meeting, and so, you know.
Well, what are you thinking, this next Tuesday or the 29th?
I would like to see the 29th, myself.
Okay.
Give us a little time to do some stuff, get some stuff together, break a ring, maybe. I'd like to see that.
What time is this, 8:00 in the morning?
Well, you could do it, again, it's up to you. We could do it during the day, we could do it at night, again...
We want people here, probably, to accommodate them a little bit, I would think. I would, later in the afternoon, accommodate everybody who wants to show up after their work, I think would probably be a good idea.
Regular council time, 6:00?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect, on the 29th, 6:00 p.m.
That'll be noticed, this is a special council meeting.
That we don't get additional pay for.
That's all I have.
And just, just a little mayor report is, I would like to, Rich Ben Harvey, belated happy birthday, yesterday was his birthday.
Thank you, finally say. That's right, exactly.
Catalina flu.
There you go.
The Catalina flu.
Okay, then, me adjourned.